I love how many, I need somebody to help me. It's just what we need to do.
Oh, I better turn this off. Okay, go.
They seem like they're interested.
Yeah.
Nobody really has any contact.
Okay, let me help with that one there. I'll talk to them.
Who are you working with?
I'm sorry, I just tried to...
I'm not working with the calendar.
So are you working for the hospital? Like Jerry, I think it's a wall or civic email.
Roy, it's you have been needing to get off.
This is my last.
I hear that voice, it caught my ear.
Yeah, our propagation.
I do, yeah, I feel like I'm getting those breaks back in that...
I appreciate the growth because you asked me to stop talking. What I was expecting was something different.
If I remember right, there was always a book slamming or something else that caught my attention too.
That was my first.
Excuse me, sir. Calling to order, Parwin City Council meeting. It is six o'clock PM on September 28th. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you here. And I just realized I did not ask... Oh, here we go. We're going to have an opening prayer and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Topham. Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful that we can come together today as a city and a community to discuss the needs of our town. Please bless that the Spirit will be with us, to guide and direct us in the way that we should deal business. Please bless that we will have an open mind to hear what will be spoken to us today and take that in and make the best decision that we can. We are so grateful for all of the moisture and the weather that we have received. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Amen. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Okay, we are now going to have a special presentation. It's the proposed Iron County School District School Bond Proposition. We have Superintendent Lance Hatch here, Todd Hess, the Business Administrator, and Ben Johnson, our School Board President. And I don't know if I need to introduce...
Shawna Lund.
Shawna Lund. Shawna Lund and Roy Matthews. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate this, Mayor and Council, allowing us to have a little bit of your time. There's a couple of reasons why we wanted to come. First, we just want to make sure that you understand the facts, that all citizens of the county understand the facts of this bond. But in particular, we know that you are leaders in the community. And although we would welcome anyone calling us and asking us questions about the bond, it's most likely that people will be interacting with you and asking you questions, saying, you know, what do you know about this? We want to make sure that you can answer those questions as well. And hopefully, we can get the word out. We are not here to advocate for a vote yes or a vote no on this bond. We just want to make sure that whatever decision an individual makes is based on the truth and the facts about this bond. From what we understand, somewhere around Halloween, all registered voters will receive a ballot in their mailbox. And on that ballot, there will be two bonds. One of them is going to be an Iron County School District bond. The other one is going to be an Iron County bond. They are not connected. We don't really know what's going to be on the Iron County bond. We haven't kept up on that. We don't know what that's involving. What we want people to understand, though, is that they are completely separate. So whatever we share today is going to be about that one bond, and it won't have anything to do with the other. So we just want to share with you real quick what the needs are in our school district, and then how the bond is a solution to those needs. And we also want to make a promise to you and every taxpayer in the county. And we want to show you what that ballot language is going to look like, so that won't be a surprise. First of all, our school district is growing. We have over 15,000 students. That makes us bigger than Provo School District. We see ourselves as a small rural school district, but we really are not. We're growing. And something happened, you know, around 2020.
Huh.
And some movement occurred, and we have seen significant growth. We saw this, and we came to the public in 2021 with the bond. And when we shared information about that bond, we made it very clear to everyone we talked to, that bond does not address all of the needs in the district. And we said, in 2023, we will be back to finish up what's not represented here. So in that bond, we did replace the science wing of Cedar High School. That project is complete. We're proud of that project. They used to have some really old science labs, and the equipment was old and everything. But one of the problems was that they just stood empty most of the time. So we were able to take that space and turn them all into classrooms. And now, every classroom is also a lab. So they can do all their labs within the classroom that they teach in, which is nice. East Elementary, built in 1952. Some buildings that are that old are doing just fine. Others are not. East was one that was just falling apart. So the bond allowed us to begin that project. It has begun. We have footers poured, and work is happening on that facility. We also, when we came to you in 2021, the growth issue that we were dealing with was the middle school. The middle schools were super tight, meaning Canyon View Middle and Cedar Middle School. So the bond allowed us to put two additions onto both of those. We have an addition on the front and on the back of each of those schools. That's going to allow us plenty of room to grow into the future, unless something crazy happens. But if we continue the steady growth that we've seen, then that will take us long into the future. And then we have the Parwin Project. That one is slated to begin spring of 2024, as soon as, you know, dirt can be dug. That will get started. We want to show you a little bit of an update on that facility. This facility will... You can see that you can have two basketball games going on at the same time. Or you could have one in the middle. You can also see that the same thing is true for volleyball. You could have two volleyball games going, or one volleyball game in the middle. There will be some bleachers right there. This is the kitchen. In here, we will store the tables, most likely, and we'll bring the tables out for lunch. These are bathrooms here. And then, remind me what that is. Oh, yeah, that's PE equipment. Yeah, thank you. But it's also the right size that we could use it as a classroom, if we needed to. So that's really nice. This is going to be a great facility. The other thing that's kind of cool is we're planning to put in a batting cage right here. So in our long winters, we can still hit a ball. The outside is likely going to look like this. We're still in design, and there's still things to work out. But this is the progress that we've made so far. We're excited about this project. It's going to be really great to have just another view of the outside of that facility. Another thing we want people to understand is that bond funds cannot be used for salaries, and they cannot be used for books, or technology, or anything like that. It can only be used for construction projects. The state of Utah gives us funding every year, per pupil, and through other programs, for salaries and books and technology. We don't receive anything from the state for capital projects, for facilities, to build a new facility or to improve a facility. The way Utah is set up, school districts must go through the public to get that done, through the bond process. And we are supposed to fund those projects through property tax. That's our avenue. So our school board...
You're expecting to want...
Yeah. Our school board has weighed all of our needs and everything over the last year or so, trying to determine exactly what needs to be on this bond. We are happy to report that they have unanimously approved all of the projects that I'll be talking about to you today. We're proud of them and the hard work that they do. So we want to share with you the needs, and that will explain what the projects are. First of all, we want to acknowledge that our number-one need is safety of students, security of our buildings. However, that is not included in this bond. And there's a reason for that. We feel like the safety and security of the students is so important that we can't leave it up to chance that maybe this bond is defeated. So we have been setting aside some funding to take care of those, and we're applying for grants through the state to be able to achieve those ends. So we are addressing that. We're just not addressing it in the bond. The things that we are addressing is growth. We're addressing adequate facilities and access to facilities. So the first area that we want to mention is in our elementary schools. Our elementary schools are starting to fill up. Well, I'll say they are full. We used to have a room for music, a room for art, a room for science. All of those rooms are now taken up for classrooms. So what we will see now is one of two things. We will either see an insertion of portable classrooms on the outside of the building. We do not like those. There's a security issue when you send the students out all the time. Also, those portable units don't have bathrooms, and we just have issues. So that's not the best solution. The other solution would be to increase class sizes. Just keep increasing those class sizes, not because we can't afford new teachers, because we can, we just don't have anywhere to put them. So what we need are more classrooms, and we need a new elementary school. We have nine elementary schools in the district. We need to build a 10th, and that will relieve the pressure on all of the other schools, bring all of their numbers down. The other need that we have is in the secondary schools, in high school in particular. We have a program called SEA. I don't know if you're familiar with SEA, but it's the Southwest Education Academy. Sometimes, we have juniors or seniors who find themselves in a situation that, you know, they've missed enough credits, they've had some problems, maybe they didn't come to school for a while, and they just aren't going to graduate. If they stay in their regular school, they will not graduate. So we have a program, and we use these trailers that are by Cedar High, kind of by Southwest Tech. Those trailers are where we house those students, and we have a special program for them. We're proud of that program. They graduated 90% of their seniors last year, one of the highest graduating classes that they've ever had. So they do great things, but we can only have 60 kids in that program because we just have these little trailers. So we need to address that. We also need to address Launch High School, which is kind of the opposite. Launch is an accelerated program where kids are getting their high school credit, but they're doing it through projects and entrepreneurial experiences. So those students, we have a long line of parents and students who want to get in, but we can't let them in because we don't have enough space. So what we need is a standalone facility that will house SEA and Launch. This would allow us to increase the number of students that we have in both of those programs and meet the needs and wants of the people of the county. Another need that we have is just adequate facilities. Canyon View High School has a wrestling room that's too small for one class to fit in. They also have a dance room, but it's also the wrestling room. So when the wrestlers are in there, the dancers aren't in there. When the dancers are in there, the wrestlers aren't in there. And the dancers tell us there is an aroma in there.
Shocker.
Of course, the wrestlers say it's the dancers' fault. But we all know who it really is. The other thing that we have with Canyon View High School, its capacity is not as high as Cedar High. What we really need to do is bring them to the same capacity, and that would give us opportunity to continue to grow and not have to address the high school setting. So we are proposing, in addition to Canyon View High, where the bottom would address our weight room, dance room, wrestling room, and on top, we would build nine new classrooms. That would bring the capacity up to where Cedar High is. And that would get us a long way into the future with growth. Also, the growth issue with high schools is helped by an alternative programs facility because we can take more students from the high school and put them in the alternative setting. Finally, the other need that we have is adequate football fields. Right now, we have football fields. What we should have are athletic fields. But we can only use them for football, and we can't even practice on them because we can only use them six to nine hours a week. I think we all understand that if we were to overuse that field, we would not have any grass by the end of football season. So we have to protect the grass. And the way we do that is we keep people off. Well, we are proposing artificial turf for all three of our high school fields, including Parwin High, not because we would save millions of gallons of water, even though we would, not because we would save hours and hours and hours of maintenance, even though we would. The reason we have it on there is that we can't afford to have a facility that we can't use. Artificial turf makes it possible to use that field all day, every day, soccer games, football games, PE, marching band, youth soccer, youth football, Saturdays, Utah Summer Games. We can use it for a lot of different things. The last thing that I'll mention in the needs is access to playground equipment. We do have students in our district that have balance issues. Some of them are using walkers. Some of them are in wheelchairs. And those students currently cannot access the playground equipment. And a very small portion of this bond is all it would take to be able to install ADA-accessible playground equipment at every elementary school, including the preschools that we have in the district. So those are our needs, and that's how the bond is going to be able to help us. We'll turn it over to Todd. Appreciate being able to be here. I'm going to talk for just a minute about the bond itself and how that gets allocated to these various projects. So what we are proposing is a $75.5 million tax-neutral bond. And we'll talk more about the tax-neutral part of this in a minute. You're going to hear me say that a lot. First of all, the way that that $75.5 million gets split up is into these five projects. Obviously, the two full facilities, the new elementary school and the alternative programs facility, are going to take up the bulk of that money. Then the Canyon View High School addition, about 15%, 8% for the turf, and about 4% for the playgrounds. Last night, no, it's Thursday. Tuesday night, our board approved a project timeline. You can see with the Canyon View High project, we're going to get started on design immediately with that. And then you can see the other projects moving right along there over the next few years. But because these are such great needs, we need to get started on these projects as soon as possible. We've tried to time them in a way that we're not competing with ourselves for subcontractors and other resources from the construction industry locally. All right, let's talk the bond. Our promise is that this bond will not increase taxes from current levels. The way that that works is that we have paid off all of the previously existing bonds that were in existence or used for previous projects. Other than the 2021 bond, we'll still be paying on those for several years. You can see from this chart, back in 2015, a homeowner who owned a personal residence valued at $405,000 was paying over $450 a year in property tax just for debt service for the school district. In fact, it was close to $470. Over the next few years, the district paid off bonds, and so that amount of tax assessment decreased. There was a big decrease between 2020 and 2021, where a big portion of those bonds was paid off. We came to the public in 2021 with our bond, and it passed. And we told people at that time, this will increase your taxes some, and we've seen that over the last couple of years. With this bond, because we've now paid off all of the older bonds, there is no proposed tax increase. So for what you're paying now, we get that $75.5 million on those five projects that we've outlined. One thing that we're finding people get a little confused about is the ballot language. You all know that we're required to put certain language on the ballot in a certain order. And so we just want to go through and point out a few things with that. The first thing that people will see is that we're asking for authorization for $75,465,000 in bonds. And we realize that is a big number, and that's going to be sticker shock to a lot of people. The tax impact of that, or property tax cost of that, is $272 on a $405,000 residence. A little strange that two years ago, we were talking about a $300,000 residence being the average value of a home in Iron County, and now it's up to 405, but that's where we're at. But that doesn't tell the whole story. You have to get down to the last part of the ballot, which says, how much will my taxes go up? And that's where we're able to explain that due to other bonds coming off, it's expected that there will be no incremental property tax increase as a result of these bonds. With that, Ben would be happy to answer any questions. No, any of us would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I also wanted to add one other thing about the facility that's going in over at Parwin High School and Parwin Elementary. And it might be the most important thing, four pickleball courts. So I'm just saying.
You had to bring up the P-word.
Yeah, that is also about a 21,000-square-foot facility is what we're looking at there. Those drawings that we showed you, again, we're still in the design phase, so there could be a couple of minor changes there, but that is what we're looking at currently.
I have one.
Okay.
I was over there to date Doctor Redd, and you're going to tear down the greenhouse? Is there any plans for a rebuild for the greenhouse, or is it just gone?
There is not a plan for it. There is a greenhouse, sorry.
What's that?
Roy is saying we're working on it.
We haven't actually seen where that footprint is. Well, like there in that parking lot where the old ones is... Right, but I think where this footprint is, I'm not exactly sure what that layout is for the relationship to the greenhouse currently. So I've been in contact with Hunter, talking about that, so...
Yeah, I have seen where the footprint is. Currently, the way it works out, the greenhouse could stay. However, they're concerned that the shade of the building will basically defeat the purpose of the greenhouse. So it will need to be at least moved in order to be effective.
We've built it.
Yeah.
And we, the kids and I, we built that.
Well, maybe they can relocate it for you to a different spot.
Roy's born.
Well...
And if I could say, the school district is awesome, and they're really good to come and to say they're not telling you to vote for this bond, they're not telling you, they're giving you information. I'm your constituent. I am from Parwin. I'm telling you, we've got to vote for this bond. It was really interesting to me last time. Parwin's getting a wonderful little multipurpose building that'll be huge for our kids that can play basketball, play the Little Bantam basketball, all of those things that are in there. They also, as they're going to school, and you hear this all the time, those elementary kids are scared to death of those high school kids that come in to the elementary school to eat school lunch. And so most of us think, well, this is a good thing. This is a positive thing for Parwin. Parwin did not vote to pass the bond. If it was up to Parwin, we would not have that building. Because Cedar and the rest of Iron County voted to pass the bond, it passed. But Parwin did not pass the bond. And so it's discouraging to me, as we work so hard for things for Parwin, that we are still lacking in getting communication out to Parwin. As we look to pass this bond, the biggest thing that kind of sticks out in my mind, I was in Kevin Porter's class when I was in sixth grade. My grandpa Johnson moved up here when I was in like fifth grade, fourth, fifth grade. They moved to Paragona. We would ride our bikes to Paragona. Me and Jake would ride our bikes to Paragona. We would move sprinkler lines on the way, and then we would sit out there. And my grandma was so stingy, she didn't want any of the popsicles to go anywhere. So my grandpa'd sneak into the house, get a popsicle, bring it out around, and we'd eat popsicles back behind the tree with him. And we had a Veterans Day program. And do you know, I guess just because I was a kid growing up and way more worried about bikes and fishing and playing and everything, I didn't know he was a veteran until that Veterans Program. And I remember us going through the Veterans Program in that little tiny gym there in Parwin, you know, with the seats around the outside, and seeing him sit there and stand up when they asked the veterans to stand up. And, you know, I was amazed, and that's what made me decide to join the military and to get into the military, is impacts like that. You look at our kids and the impacts that they had. Well, looking back at him, he was a World War II veteran. They came home from the war, and what did they do? They paid for bonds for schools for those generations. That's when Parwin Elementary School got built, was just after that. And that's, the kids packed all their stuff up and all their desk up and all their books up and everything, and came over to Parwin to have school here. Those people sacrificed so much and were willing to come back and to sacrifice to get these schools for the kids. Um, I'm glad that I have the opportunity to be able to pass that on. Somebody paid for me to go to school, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to pay for our kids to go to school. Our kids in Parawan deserve nice facilities. They deserve, um, a place to be able to go to school, a place to have a batting cage inside. They deserve to have a field that the girls soccer can play on and have locker rooms they can actually go to, to use the bathrooms and things during halftime. And so all of those things will be a positive, positive thing for us. Um, we drive down to Mesquite, and we're there till one o'clock in the morning, playing little kid Bannum football because that's the fields we could play on. To be able to have fields in Parawan and Cedar that can be used continually without a negative impact on them is a huge, huge thing. So Parawan is getting something out of this. Parawan is represented and getting things out of this. And so please, help get the word out. Um, this is a positive, good thing for our community, and help get the word out so that people understand. I always think about my dad. My dad's, he's a good old guy, but he's a grumbly guy. He sees a bond on a, on a ballot, and he votes no because it's a bond, it has something to do with taxes, so he votes no. He will vote yes for this bond because he understands the impact it has on his grandkids, and that's the battle that we're up against. We've got to figure out how to get our people in our community to see what benefit this gives back to our kids. We can complain all day long that they're too much on their video games, they are all of these things, let's do something about it. Let's vote to pass this bond. And I want to show Todd that Parawan's actually going to vote to pass a bond.
And I would just add, that was awesome, but I would just add one more thing, and we get all five projects without an increase in taxes. That is good planning. That is the way we should be trying to, to do that as much as we can, and, and gratefully, we've been able to structure it that way.
Any questions?
As the City Council Director Jim will take care of greenhouse.
You heard it here.
I can help.
Well, we really appreciate you coming here, and I don't know if any of the other council was surprised by any of the information, but it was great information, and it was very enlightening, and I, the structure of your presentation was really, really helpful, and I, I appreciate you taking the time to come visit us directly here in our city council meeting. So does the city council have any other questions?
One little piece of help that we could have, there's a misnomer in our community that the building got forgot about. Parawan once again got forgot about in this whole process. That is not the case. It's just tiny, they've been very diligent in looking at what the building's going to be, and we're going to get an occupancy out of the last one. Parawan did not get forgotten about. I'm too loud on the board, that Parawan haven't forgotten about.
And we're grateful for that.
We are, thank you. All right, you're free to, free to go.
Yeah. We have the town hall meeting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now moving on to our city council meeting with kind of our more normal order on our agenda. Do we have any conflicts or personal interest on any of the agenda items by any of the members of the city council?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
And then we need an approval of the meeting's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now moving into public comment time, this has been set apart for you to come and express your ideas, concerns, and comments, and we will limit those to two minutes per person.
Are you going to invite Mike to start, or?
You can.
So, I'm glad she actually said that because, um, I was supposed to have Mike on the agenda. It's a, it's a very informal, it's not anything we're voting on, and, and, um, and I dropped the ball on that, so, but we, we'd like to invite him during public comment to come up and share what he brought with us to share, and Kirsten, you need to come up and just be here with us. Everybody know.
Come up and be embarrassed.
Let me introduce Mike. Mike is, is with the trust, our insurance company, and Kirsten, of course, has been our pool manager this year.
I know.
And I don't know how diligent the mayor's going to be on her timing of her clock, but...
It's usually me, that makes timing.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll talk fast. Um, I'm Mike Stagg, I'm a risk manager, like, like Dan said, with Utah Local Government Trust, which is y'all's insurance company. Mayor, council, Dan, thanks for having me here. I'm happy to come out, and this is a, this is something that I am incredibly happy to present to, to the council, to the mayor, to the city of Parawan. Um, for those who are, who are not aware, a couple of years ago, back in 2021, Councilman Burton and I, we, we, we got together and we did a walk of the old city pool. And a lot of you know where that, where that walk went and, and what kind of happened for them. Um, and since then, we've, we've been, we were out there another three or four times. You know, Mayor was out there, was out there with Councilman Shirtlift, um, you know, we, we've been out, and we, we walked around, and, and the, the state of the swimming pool was just in disarray, we'll say. Um, there was a lot of stuff that needed to be done, and this was maybe, I don't know, about a month ago, month or two ago. I was driving down to St. George, and I, I knew that there had been talks to do a, a rebuild or, or something like that with the swimming pool. And I was driving down to St. George to go to, to go to do some training, and I thought, you know, I'll just drive by Parawan and see, see what's going on. And I, I drove by the swimming pool, and my jaw like legit hit the floor. The, what this community did, the way this community banded together, the way that the council supported, the mayor supported, and the way that the city and everyone here just bootstrapped it, and everyone was in with blood, sweat, and tears, and with donated time and donated materials, the way that that swimming pool was able to be turned around to what it is now was, was truly astonishing. I go all over the state, and I look at all of the swimming pool facilities that the trust ensures. So we have five hundred and ninety different members. Um, of those five hundred and ninety different members, about thirty-five of them have swimming pool facilities, thirty-five of them, those members, with about forty-two individual swimming pools throughout the state. Um, going through this one now, this is, this is easily one of the, one of the top swim, out, you know, seasonal outdoor swimming pools that I've seen in the entire state. Just the work, the craftsmanship that is done at this facility, I mean, there were, there were things that, that were really, you know, really concerning to us as, as the insurance company, to see the, um, to see the state of, of the, the facility that kids were using, and the community had really come to love. But now, this facility has turned a complete one-eighty, and that's really thanks to this community here for the, the efforts that were put forth, for the, for the support from the council and from you, Mayor. I, I just can't say enough of how thankful we are and how thankful I am to kind of have been a little bit of a part of this project. Um, it's just been fantastic to see. And, you know, talking with Kirsten and talking with Dan, I came out a couple of weeks ago, and we just walked through the facility. I hadn't, I hadn't been through it yet, and just the changes that were made and the things that, that this community has done, it's, it's amazing. And so I really want, I wanted to come by, and I wanted to present, uh, an award for safety for you guys, um, that we're presenting not only to, not only to the mayor and to the council and to Dan and to Kirsten at the pool, but this is for the whole community of Parawan, just for the, the fantastic work that was done to bring this pool up to standard and to make it a facility that we don't have to be scared of. Like, kids can come, and they're going to be safe. And things were done, and they were done the right way. It wasn't band-aided together, it wasn't something that was thrown together at the last minute and said, oh, we're just going to make it work. This was, it's done the right way. I, like, like I said, I've seen so many facilities, and the way that this, this community pulled together and made this just a phenomenal place is, is so awesome. Um, and so with, with Mayor and council, with your permission and your blessing, I'd really just like to present this to Kirsten, um, so she can take it for the pool, display it there at the pool, and we'll be, and I'll be back every single year, and we'll do, we'll do walkthroughs, and we'll do assessments, we'll do risk assessments, we'll, we'll look at lifeguards and performance and things like that, and what we're going to do is we're going to add some blocks. That's what this little space is for. We're going to add some blocks in for each year that you do a fantastic and phenomenal job, and I'm, I'm sure that we're going to fill this thing up rather quickly. And so I just wanted to, again, just thank you, I know I took longer than two minutes. Um, so this was, this was just something that I felt was really important, and I thank you for your time in letting me come here and really do this, do this presentation for you, and you have to take our picture, you can.
Do you want to stand in front of the council, and you can take the picture this way so that everyone is here?
Yeah.
Great. You guys want to stand up?
Yes.
So it looks.
Maybe we'll stare, so we look, because I'm sure.
So we're not behind our screen.
You're going to be on the picture, aren't you?
Hey.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, thank you.
What's he going to do, give a hug? Well, and Kirsten, maybe it should stay here until the pool reopens so people can see it. We don't have a cabinet, I don't think, for those things, but we can find a place to put it where the community can appreciate it, because it really is, it's, it's for the community.
And I just want to say Kirsten's, her, her, her contract, it was, it ends at the end of September, and we hope to, um, bring her back next year, we'll have to renegotiate that. She's done a phenomenal job as well, and, um, we're going to invite you to come back when we do our plaque thing, when we do that, and, and bring some lifeguards with you and all of that stuff too, but if you will come back when we do that, that'd be great, but she's done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, are there any other public comments this evening? Okay, moving along then. Um, now into the consent meeting, we need to approve seven and eight. Um, these are usually just administrative, so it's the city council meeting minutes from September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the approval of the warrant register for September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve consent meeting items number seven and eight.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Now moving into action meeting, we only have one item this evening that is on the agenda for vote, and this is the pickleball and pump track location, which are pending approval of conditional use permit. Um, do we have any other things we need to introduce with this item?
I don't know, I guess just, um, whatever conversation we want to, where we want to go. I guess we, we did, um, there was kind of a, I don't know, it wasn't an official, but a little bit of an ad hoc meeting out there. There's, uh, an individual who is offering up services to do some design work, um, who lives in town, he is a, he is a, an engineer, designer, and so we're looking at, um, possibly, um, hiring him. Um, and we've also talked about, um, maybe using, um, um, the mayor of Paragona, who does design work, he's offered services as well to do some design work for us. Um, so, I mean, really, the next official step is, is getting, is having a hearing and getting the conditional use permit, um, from planning and zoning, which will be on the next agenda for them, but, um, I, I know that, that people are, are wanting to know what we're doing, so I would just caution that i- if we do, um, vote on something tonight, that we would do it conditional upon it being approved in planning and zoning with the conditional use permit, because it won't come back to the city council. Um, the only conditional use permits that do come to the city council are for RV parks, RV, whatever you call them, and, um, PUDs. Other than that, it's administratively done in, in planning commission, so, um, that's, that's really all I have. I, I know we've all been actively talking and looking, and there's been a lot of ideas re, you know, proposed and all of that, so, um, I, I guess the, the question is, is, does the council have anything it wants to discuss, questions, any details that I can go into or answer or, or research? Uh, it, do you feel comfortable moving forward with a vote before hearing what the public says at the conditional use hearing? I don't know, that's, I guess that's just the reality of the question that we have.
It just, it doesn't bother me to vote on it pending the outcome of the conditional use permit vote.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't it also help the, the public, when the conditional use permit is discussed, having a specific location to?
It, it would, it would definitely cut down on any ambiguity.
Right, so that the...
What the city's...
The focus would be, this is what the city proposes.
So you're not basically talking about either activity at either location, you're looking at what the city is proposing?
Right, would that...
I think it would help. Um, Larry and I talked about that at one point, is it appropriate to have a conditional use permit? And what we're officially doing is we're having a conditional use permit to do either activity at all of those parcels. Um, so, so if you live close to there and you're a public, you're, you're a member of the public and you're coming, it's, do I want to have, um, a, a bike park near my house or pickleball court near my house? If we, if we vote on, on this tonight, we're basically saying this is the intention of the city, as, as long as the conditional use permit is proposed, which, which, which provides a little bit of clarity, um, rather than leaving it up in the air and people being frustrated because they're not really sure what we're thinking, you know?
So where are, where are we, are we still looking at the retention pond as the location for the pump track?
Um, yeah, definitely, I mean...
So the proposal would be, depending on the conditional use permit, the city is going to move forward with a pump track at the location next to the retention pond. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, and, and by, and by, and, and also if you, if that's the case, then pickleball would be in that other location, west of the soccer fields.
So are you having the conditional, I mean, the public hearing on, is it the ninth of October?
Yeah.
It hasn't been scheduled.
Eighteen.
It's scheduled, yeah?
It might even be the eighteenth because it was like where they had that meeting on Thursday.
That's right, because meeting was on Thursday instead of Wednesday, in order to get fourteen days.
Okay.
It had to be on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Because we only had thirteen days from the last planning commission to the next planning commission, so, so the eighteenth is the next time that it could have, we would have had, you know, fill our notice.
Looking at this, Kim Skinner recommended that, um, we have a hundred and seventy-five by a hundred and seventy-five feet to allow for eight pickleball courts, and that will allow walkways, room in between, around the perimeter and so forth. So with that, with that group that's out there, the consensus was that we probably should look at that southeast corner of that property, a hundred and seventy-five feet square that's west of the soccer fields, west of that existing road right now, south, I say north of the, the road that comes in, the Paragona Road that goes to the fairgrounds, so that corner right there... So that corner right there, you know, however it can be... So would the, would, would our motion need to be for both locations? 'Cause it, it says just pump track location, but would we?
No, it says pickleball and pump track. It says both.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so I think we should, but I would suggest that we, uh, specify it a little more to ta- take in that area that they've requested, so that we kinda are not there wobbling, you know? No, I, I agree. There is that area that is used for parking from the, and so that way you would accommodate all the uses and there'd be plenty of room, according to what has been recommended. So Dan, if, uh, the motion is to, let's see, how would, uh... Let's see, I move that we send the pickleball and pump track location to the planning and zoning for approval, the pump track being located at the retention pond area, and the pickleball court, the area west of the soccer field in the southwest corner of the city properties.
Southeast, southeast, yeah.
Southeast, thank you, yeah, southeast.
Yeah.
Corner of the city property. Do we need to specify like that a hundred and seventy-five feet or? No, I think, I think we just do it there and then they can, depending on what the... Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna come back and look at design.
All we're doing is the broad, general area. But that was his recommendation, and that would account for enough room for all the... Right. The pathways and the perimeter and, and so forth, so there's plenty of room there.
Pending the conditional use permit.
Pending the condition, that's why we're sending it to planning and zoning. Conditional on the conditional use permit. Well, that's why we're...
I'm in a second, not motion.
I was gonna do that too.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Larry, you're not in charge, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
Let's move it along.
You went that way instead of that way. Okay, moving to the work meeting, this is item number ten, we have the electric department report, isn't it power department?
I think we need to have a...
I thought the semantics of electric was... Okay, power cost adjustment conversation. Jeremy Franklin, our department head.
All right, good evening, um, I just wanted to kinda give a brief update on how the power cost adjustment's going. The graph on the top you've seen before, you probably remember the, the steep green, oh, the steep green line that was heading downward in a bad way. Um, you see the last couple months, we started to turn that, uh, that green line, that which is an under, which was, was our under collection, um, based off the study we had done. It's starting to roll the right direction, and you can see by the red line, our power purchase costs have started to levelize also, which is what we was really hoping for. The yellow line is the, the power cost adjustment, um, revenue. So we started in April at four cents, we've continued the four cents through to now. The, uh, the bottom, uh, bars just show that in, uh, in numbers instead of on gra- graphically, so the, uh, August twenty twenty-three and July, you can see we started, well, even June, I guess, we started to finally, uh, eat away at that under collection. Um, which is what we were hoping for. The, uh, the power board's recommendation is to remain at four cents through this next billing cycle, which I, I think that the September bill should be similar to August, just based off power prices, and with the Hunter plant running high load hours, um, it, uh, keeps our power purchase costs a lot lower. October and November, Hunter does not, um, is not scheduled to run, because normally October, November are shoulder months, meaning, um, loads are lower and typically prices are lower. So we, uh, with that not being scheduled to run, we're not exactly sure how that's gonna affect the power purchase costs. I think in April, Hunter was not running, and you can see that bill was fairly high still from UAMPS. Um, so the recommendation is to keep it at four cents, like I said, to kinda see how our power supply costs hopefully stabilize through this, uh, coming fall. You can see back here on the, uh, I'm not used to this clicker. September was when we first kinda noticed a large increase, September of last year, but it was a very warm September, then October was mild again. So it's really temperature driven, but, um, so just to get through September and October to see how supply costs are, that, um, that's the recommendation. Um, and then we need to eventually discuss on what we, if we wanna just continue to chip away at the over/under collection, or if we want to make slight adjustments in the, in the PCA revenue or the PCA charge. Um, I did look at Santa Clara's, um, power cost charge, and in March, their, their PCA was seven point eight cents. But now in October, they're down under one cent. So that's the hope of what, what we, what we wanna do with ours, is get it down to where it's, you know, a cent or lower. And if power supply costs will continue the way they are, that should definitely be, um, doable.
Jeremy, is there any projections for future power costs? I mean, have they got any long range or short range?
Um...
Projections?
The, the projection through the next year is, um, looking a lot better than it did last year. December, January were way high last year, and the, the projected, um, forecast for power supply costs are, are much lower. But it, power supply costs are a little bit like the stock market, they kinda, you know, if a heat wave or a cold spilt can, can drive the, either direction. So with moderate temperatures, um, you know, I mean, like just what we're used to, then power supply costs should come down. It's based a lot on natural gas pricing, so, um, so hopefully trending down, but...
Jeremy, do you know that much about the new plant going in up in Beaver that I was reading about?
I, I don't, the geothermal?
Yes.
Um, I don't know a lot about that one, UAMPS is looking into a few geothermal plants.
And I thought, if, if I remember rightly, it was gonna be four megawatts.
I saw something that it's gonna be like one of the, the biggest geothermal projects.
I think it starts with, though, it's just gonna be the four start with.
See, four megawatts is fairly small, I mean, our, our town peaks in July at over four megawatts. So it's a fairly small plant, I don't know who...
They were touting it pretty, but maybe that's just the initial startup or something.
I think it was initial, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard much about that, but, um, it's not a UAMPS project that I'm aware of.
Is that west of Beaver or north?
Melford.
Melford?
North of Melford.
'Cause they have that one over by Salford, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is Melford.
Okay.
And what will the Red Creek do for us when we get that up and running?
So, yeah, we're hoping Red Creek will be on in two weeks is our plan, um, the, basically, as we run Red Creek, it basically lowers our, our kilowatt hours purchased from UAMPS, so that should be...
Well, that should help us too.
Yes, that should be a bet, it's a, Red Creek plant's like a three hundred, peak four hundred KW plant, so it's not, uh, it's not like it's gonna cover our total load or anything, but it will definitely be...
It'll be helpful.
Benefit, yes. It's been almost two, well, it's been over two years since that plant flooded, just lack of being able to get electrical components is due later, but everything's pretty well installed, we're just waiting for the gentleman to come and do startup on it.
So hopefully it's looking on a good, positive side for us.
Yes, I think everything's looking much better.
Fingers crossed.
Well, and U, UAMPS has a better, uh, grasp on, on when Hunter should run, how much coal's available, coal shipments, and so... Really, our Perron City, uh, UAMPS bills are mostly based off of Hunter, I mean, they're seventy-five percent of our resource, um, and if Hunter runs, our bills are low, if Hunter doesn't, we're susceptible to the market, so... Um, so I had a couple other items I wanted to discuss if we're, if anybody hasn't, doesn't have any other questions on the power cost. Um, so, um, this is a UAMPS project, the firm sour- firm power supply project, um...
Go back one time, go back. If we had not done the PCA, that green line would have kept going down.
Even, if you look even in April and May, the PCA was, uh, implemented in April at four cents. But that, the high power, we were still...
Losing most.
Under collected by, as far as base revenue and base, uh, power purchase costs.
And, and the recommendation for the PCA at that time was, was much higher than four?
Yeah, more like six, six point two, six, yeah.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, we were, we were really conservative in the implementation of it. Had we not done it, I mean, that green line would keep diving, so...
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think as we still slowly chip away, we, we, you know, in a few months, if the power supply costs do continue like this, that, I mean, we could get down in the two to one cent range fairly quickly, just depending on what we wanna do with the under collection. We've already, from the peak, we've almost regained about a hundred thousand dollars off the under collection, so, um, yeah. Thanks, Dan, good point. So the firm power supply project, um, UAMPS, uh, kinda approached me, um, Perron's one of the only members not in the firm power supply project, and I think the reason, the biggest reason we weren't is we've usually been long resource with Hunter and Colorado River. We haven't needed other resources, but, um, in, in the firm power supply project, it's basically a group of different, um, uh, megawatt producing projects that are usually either smaller in megawatt size or shorter contract periods, and get grouped into the firm power supply project, and so you can see there's a, so, a few that are already in the project, the geothermal, um, plants, and a couple solars, um, and then market purchases. So, um, just talking to UAMPS, they're like, um, we figured it's probably a good time to join this, this project as, you know, our coal-fired or carbon-based resources start to go away. I was just looking at the documents that UAMPS sent, and I noticed that there is a resolution to join this, so, um, if we want, if we choose to do that, we'll have to come back next meeting and approve the resolution. But, so basically, what typically happens with UAMPS is they'll, they'll look into a project, um, get as much knowledge as they can, and then solicit each member, and each member has, can sign up for whatever, um, KW or megawatt hour production that they feel is, fits their portfolio. And then after, um, they get all the final details, the plant becomes, or the project becomes a, you know, generating, producing, a megawatt producing plant, then it gets moved into the firm, um, project. So we've had a few that we've looked at, I mean, if you might remember the Enchant project and the Sunnyside project. If those would've came to fruition, they would've, well, the Enchant project, it would've been moved into the firm power supply, and we would've just automatically joined the firm at that time, because we were, are getting energy out of that project. The Sunnyside project, I think we talked about it a while ago, um, the UAMPS has resolicited interest in that, um, but it's only a three-year project, um, and I think I might have that in a later slide, um, yeah, I do, so we'll wait on just, just a second on that, but, but, um, so basically, I'm just, um, asking if there's any, any, uh, questions about joining the firm, would, would it increase our costs with UAMPS? Minimum, it's just be, it'd be accounting and general costs for now, until we have a project that actually produces megawatts, and then we'd just be buying it for the, you know, that price, which is no different than any other project, but...
What's the timeframe for a commitment needed on that?
Um, whenever we want. The, the, the contract she sent me, that was like a week ago, and, uh, UAMPS, the UAMPS board actually would votes to let us in, and they actually already did that, like, they've approved us to go in, so, um, they're just waiting whenever we do it. There's, there's really no project in the works right now that we need to jump right into it. Um, so I think next meeting or the meeting after that, if we just approve the resolution, then we would join it.
The costs won't change?
No, not until we start taking energy out of it, if we find a project that we like, then, but, we'd have some minimal accounting and, accounting costs, but where we're not taking energy, it'd be very minimal up for now.
What is the initial?
I don't, I'm not actually sure what the, what the accounting costs are. I think it'd be, I mean, very minimal.
Let's say we do, what, what sort of a percentage of our total power purchase would come from firm?
Well, until we have a project that, that is, that we sign up for, we don't know, 'cause these projects are already in the works, they've already been subscribed. So they'd have to basically get another project, so say, say that, say it's a geothermal project, and we decide we want a megawatt out of that project at whatever the price may be, then we would be subscribed for a megawatt.
Jeremy, where's the Red Mesa top?
Um, that is, I believe, out towards...
The Four Corners?
Land, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a solar project out towards Blanding in that area, yep. I'm not sure where the still one and one B are. So a lot of these projects, like, uh, you know, when you're at UAMPS, and any of these projects go to an executive session, if you're not in the firm, then you don't sit in and listen to that, and so that's another benefit we would get, being in part of the firm, is I would be in there listening and learning from the projects. So if there's no questions, I'll, I'll, I'll bring the, uh, resolution back, um, to join the firm power supply project at the next meeting if...
Power board, have any input on that? I, I, I missed it, 'cause we were doing planning and zoning the same time, so I wasn't, did, did you guys talk about it in power board?
Yeah, we did.
We did, I, I think we...
I don't think we really made a, we'd all formally wanted to, to...
To look at it.
Look at it and stuff like that, we're not going for commitment as a, a set...
Yeah, yeah, we, right, we would just join the project to be...
So we can put our foot in the door, basically.
Yeah.
So my understanding, Jeremy, if you correct me, is what you're wanting to do, right now, we're so deep in Hunter project, and when it goes down, we really pay the price.
Yeah.
And, but we want to broaden, you want to broaden our portfolio, so if something goes off, it's not gonna affect us as much.
Right, yeah, and then, you know, there's kinda two sides of that, we're like, right now, uh, Hunter's been running in September, um, part of September, and power prices have been in like the, the forty dollar megawatt hour range, you know, which is about where Hunter costs are. You'd have kind of a problem if you sign up for all these projects, where you become, you know, say some of these cost you seventy, but then you're surplus, so then you're buying at seventy and selling it back at forty on the market. So you don't wanna be too, you don't wanna have too many, uh, resources or too much, you know, you want it to try to fit your load, but your load is a curve.
It's difficult, 'cause it, 'cause obviously you just say, let, let's just diversify and get power from all these places, but when you're losing out on negative, you know, arbitrage, you know, you're buying high and selling low, because you've oversubscribed, that's a problem.
Yeah, right.
But also, we gotta look at too, Hunter is gonna go away.
Right.
And hard to say that this nuclear plant is questionable.
Yeah, which, that's, my next slide is about the nuclear plant. Yeah. So, um, yeah, I'll just, uh, read through that document a little closer and look at the resolution. But really, yeah, I mean, we're just joining the project for now, we, we don't have any project that we're buying megawatts, so it's the, you know, minimal cost upfront. So the, onto the nuclear project. The, the project's still, um, trying to move forward, we're still, um, lacking subscription. Um, if you remember, we have a agreement with the developer that if we don't have eighty percent subscription and, uh, um, levelized cost of electricity of eighty-nine dollars a megawatt hour, um, by the COLA submittal, which is Combined Operating License Agreement, submittal of February, we have right to reimbursement. Right now, we're still sitting at the hundred and twenty megawatt mark for subscription, and to get to eighty percent, I think it's three sixty. Um, so we're quite a ways away. So, uh, yeah, the CFPB continues to have conversations with new subscribers, but they have been reluctant to move forward, because they're worried about cost overruns, and some of them are worried about transmission access. The, the, the interest has heated up the last few months, I think, but I think the timeline to get it done by here is a challenge. Um, and then the economic competitive test of the eighty-nine dollars a megawatt hour, um, we will receive those numbers in November, and, um, if eighty-nine dollars is not met, UAMPS has the right to withdraw and seek reimbursement. With inflation, inflation, increased finance costs, and uncertainties about the... Um, with inflation, inflation, increased finance costs, and uncertainties about the, the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act, that eighty nine dollars per megawatt hour is definitely challenged. Uh, um, I'm not saying it's not doable, we'll know more in November, but it's definitely challenged. I think when we started this budget phase, the, the Inflation Reduction Act was pretty new, we didn't know how that was going to affect the project, what, what, um, benefits that would bring, and I, as, as the Inflation Reduction Act has become more, um, well-known, that, uh, it's not, it's kind of, the feeling is that it's not going to give us as large enough benefit to beat that eighty nine dollars. Um, but like the bottom bullet says, people are still working to, to make it successful, it's definitely a need. Um, I think it's just, um, just timeline wise, I don't see it working now. I don't know if UAMs, you know, decides to put a pause and say, you know, let's work on subscription and see what we can do, or, I, I, you know, I'm not saying that it's definitely not doable, but the numbers are definitely challenged. So, that's just an update, I don't think they have questions on that one. Okay, and then Hunter, we talked a little bit about, um, UAMs purchased, I think, forty five thousand tons of coal from another Hunter participant in August, and, um, to run Hunter around the clock for a month burns, I believe it's twenty two thousand tons of coal, so, that purchase, um, helps going into the winter, uh, month, and, um, there's still coal coming in slowly. Um, like I said, the Hunter, we ran Hunter July and August and most of September, which has helped our power prices. Um, and we plan on curtailing Hunter for October and November, um, just because market prices look low. Uh, we talked a little bit about Sunnyside, which is a three year, uh, waste coal facility. It was around the clock, um, product, seventy two dollars a megawatt hour range. We talked about, you know, you buy in at seventy two and the market's fifty. Um, so, I met with Kelt Mannerson, who's the UAM's kind of resource guru, and, uh, together, we kind of thought that, that, you know, around the clock for three years doesn't, isn't best for our needs. We could possibly just make a, a market purchase for like peak hours or something like that, that would, that would more shape to our load rather than be, push us more surplus. Um, if Hunter would run, like, right now, with Hunter running and it being cool, we, we're, we're almost a megawatt long, megawatt surplus with just Hunter, um, for September, we're not that way in the summer, well, the, the heat, but. So, I think that, you know, with the seventy two dollar megawatt hour range, which, which right now is not a horrible price, but just pushing us more surplus in the shoulder months, I, I don't see that there's a large benefit. Whereas a three year purchase, well, there is a possible five year extension on it, but, uh, our thoughts were just to not, not join this project right now and look for other needs or other
So, it, there's no way around it, if we participate, it's around the clock?
Yep, yeah, it'd be like, in the contract, be, I think it's seventy one dollars and twenty five cents was the last number I heard, but, yeah, it's, uh, twenty four seven, basically, around the clock, uh, all twelve months. So, I think it just doesn't really fit our resource and load mix.
I think the only thing that would make it maybe attractive is if we didn't have other options and we expected natural gas to go crazy again, and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, but with like a three year, you know, product, I, I, I think that we, know, knowing more about the situation of coal at Hunter and how to run the Hunter based on market price, you know, I think UAMs have done a lot of diving into the best way to operate Hunter now, and before, we just crank Hunter full load, and each member would take their allotment, and, you know, and, but I, there's been a lot of adjustments with lack of coal deliveries. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that UAMs has a better grasp on Hunter, which keeps our prices lower than the seventy two megawatt hour range.
Now, Hunter is our nice car that we keep in the garage on bad days, and we only drive it on a good day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, Hunter was supposed to, you know, has always been a base load resource, and we're using it more now for market shaving or lead, or load following, you know, it's, it's not how a coal plant's typically designed, but when you can't get coal deliveries, you gotta make adjustments, so. I mean, that's all I have. Yes.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Does the council have any questions? As clear as mud. I think it's, I don't have any questions.
So, next time you'll bring that proposal or
The resolution, yeah.
Resolution, okay.
Yep. Yep, yeah, like I said, we're, we're one of the only members that aren't on, in the firm project. There, there's a few other members like, uh, I think it's Holden that are in the same boat as we are. Hunter's their largest resource, they get a little bit of Colorado River, um, and they, they have joined the firm. Um, I don't know if they have another, maybe some of that solar. Um, but, yeah, we're, I think it's definitely a, a good project to be at the table at when carbon resources start to go offline, so, but yeah, I'll bring the resolution
Okay.
To action next time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Okay, now moving to reports, updates, old business follow-up. Um, I don't know why I can never remember which side I start on. Where was I last time?
I think you started over here last time.
I think you started left on there, so.
Okay, we'll start with councilmember Shertlithson. Thank you.
Um, no, nothing to report other than, and I may have, should have done it during public comment, but, uh, the veterans met with the, the school, and they're going to help with the, uh, flag retirement ceremony. Uh, I did need to get the okay, or at least inform you that we'll be doing, we want to do it up at the, uh, Veterans Monument, but since that's city property, I need to get administrative approval.
Yep, just call the front, just call the, the office and, and we'll schedule it for you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Um, we did have Power Board, but Jeremy covered everything, so it was good. Um, but I want to get an updates on, um, on our fire hydrants and stuff. Um, I got a text the other night, uh, from, uh, Frank Showers and Ron Clayton, as they've been going around. Uh, they've done two hundred and thirty six hydrants, um, they've been tested and lubed. Um, that night, there was three with clearance issues, um, basically stating that, uh, can't access to them. Some of the pictures there were kind of appalling, that, uh, one was just right underneath a wooden fence, that how can you turn it on, you know? It was, it was like, wow, you know? Uh, but there's four hydrants, um, hidden with brush, they cleaned. Um, there's one that's out on, I think, the Gap Road right there, that, uh, would need heavier equipment, that they would need to be cleared off onto that one. Uh, another one was four and a half inch nut on one is busted, so you couldn't get into that. Um, the six hundred west, um, across from five hundred, uh, forty north in Honey Lane, doesn't work, and then also one forty five north and nine hundred west does not work at all. So, there's kind of concerning there, and they're doing some good work, I mean, it's, it's, this is good to do, but he's been texting, um, Chief Shears and Kelly and, and I, so.
Yeah, and I, I got texts or emailed on it as well, and I, and I talked with Kelly, and we're going to get, we're going to get those replaced. While we're, 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 we have some things that are, that we have, that we put money in the budget for this year, and it's in the same area where we're going to do some adjustment of PRVs and things like that. And, and I said, this, is this something that we can do at the same time, um, talking with Kelly? So, the, the plan is especially those two that aren't working at all, to get those fixed. Um, I was unaware that there was some, one that needed heavy equipment. Did that get communicated as well to Public Works?
That was, yeah, it was through, it's Kelly too, so I think
Okay.
I'll look, double check on that. And then also, I know I've brought up before, before you, before you came, but there's some, so those hydrants that are old Salt Lake that I would like to see if we can get them changed out, because we don't have, old Salt Lake thread is what they are. And you got to have a special adapter, and I think one engine only has that in Parowan. Nothing else like Brianhead or, or Peregrine that can go to those hydrants.
Really?
Yeah.
That's news to me.
Uh, yeah, no, no, I didn't think we brought it up in budget hearings and stuff. I know I talked to Cleve before.
How many are, are you saying you have that old thread pad or?
I don't have to talk to Kelly, he's aware of them. There's probably five or six mostly that's in this area and stuff, but there's several of them that you can't, uh, attach to without that.
Do, if, do we, um, I, can we get it, some adapters fairly cheap and put on the trucks?
No, it's not. They, they don't make that thread anymore. That's what they don't. So, that's why we've only got one adapter, so you have to switch them out.
Wow, okay, good to know.
I'll, I'll meet with you and talk to, uh, Chief Shears and stuff.
Good.
Thank you.
That's awesome. You want to find these things out this way?
Before.
Not, not when you need the hydrant?
We did have that one fire up there, and, and luckily, one person, um, knew where that adapter was. A lot of the other people didn't, and, uh, and, uh, luckily, we could get, uh, attached to hydrant and stuff, so, yeah.
It's you.
I don't have anything with the power. Um, you're going to go over the library, right, Dan?
Yep.
So, I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Okay, I had a theater board meeting last week, and it was a good meeting. Um, it's good to see them so active, and there's like actually little board members that show up and want to participate and do stuff. So, they are, basically, they've got a lot of things booked out through October, November, and December. They are also still planning on doing the Spook Alley through the Interact Club, uh, with Jennifer Terry. And their theme is The Nightmare Before Christmas, and they're still going to do, like they did last year, they'll do the food drive, so, um, money donations if you want to with the food drive, and all of that money, and, well, I shouldn't say the money, because I don't know about that, but all of the food is going to be donated to Subfor Santa. Um, and I believe last year they came and they had, did she come in with a wagon? Like, I was out of town when she came in with all the food that they collected.
She came in with a wagon.
Yeah, I was like, am I remembering that right? Cause I remember I was online, and I thought she came in with that. But anyway, so it should be super fun, and, yes. Also, we are still, we, meaning Kelly and I, are still working on, um, things that we need to do for the RAP tax. If you guys will notice, if you haven't already noticed, on the website, it has more information, um, that has been posted on there about that. Um, by the end of next week, um, you should be getting something in the mail, like a postcarded flyer type thing that spells out like what the RAP tax is, what it's going to be used for, what it could be used for, and just kind of like some ins and outs and questions that people have about it. Um, one question that I did get, I have had several people email me questions, which, thank you. I like interaction with the public, even if you come at me negatively, nega, is that negati, I can't say the word, anyway. You come at me not very nicely, but we can turn around the conversation because it's just, um, information. There's not a lot of information out there, and what information is out there, a lot of it is inaccurate. So, I think the flyer will help, um, alleviate some of, um, the stress that people are having about it. Um, people are worried that the money that's generated into the city, um, for the RAP tax will be spent on other things, um, that don't pertain to recreation arts and parks. Well, it's against the law for the city to appropriate those funds any other way, and the city is not going to do that. There will be, um, there was also some concern that I've been hearing about, um, well, the council's just going to do whatever they want to do. Well, I have no comment on that. However, there is a committee that is made up of community members, just like you. Yes, there will be probably one or two council members on that committee, but more so for information to bring
Michelle, correct me, I think that committee is required.
It is, it is a requi-
Not something you just, yeah, we throw together, it's required.
No, it is required by law. Once, and how that is put in place also is, once the RAP tax is passed on the ballot, then the committee can be formed, and I believe, I'd have to check, uh, like timelines, but I think you would have to start putting that together by January. Have a committee in place, and then once the funds start coming in, and then there's a certain time, and I don't know all the ins and outs of that part of it yet, but it is not the city council saying, okay, this is what we're going to do. That committee will come, recommend to the city council the projects, people have to put in applications to get funding, um, like nonprofit organizations. Um, and there's been a lot of talk about stuff that's happened in Cedar with the RAP tax, and I just say, I don't sit on their city council, and I don't know, like, I honestly don't know what has happened with certain things that are going on in the public. But, um, just so you know, it's not the city council that solely decides where this money is going and what projects it's going to be spent on.
It's a state law, right?
It is a state law, yes, and it's very, and it's very clear, it's very cut and dry, um, what things can be used for it, and it can be ongoing city projects like our swimming pool, the, uh, Aladdin Theater, um, the parks, obviously, um, the trail systems that we've got going on. There's a lot of projects within Parowan that I know, um, what's that committee you said on, Matt? That, oh, Economic Development, sorry, I just couldn't think to my brain, thank you, David. That they have all these projects that they need like matching grant money and stuff like that, and they, this is a great way to help that committee, matching funds to help them get some of these things off the ground. And it's really good on grant applications where it's like, oh, well, Parowan City has enacted this, they are collecting this, they're able to, they're not just asking for handouts, basically. We are doing our part to get what we need to have matching dollars for grant money that they want to apply for. So, it just makes, it makes things a little more smoother. So, be, so the bottom line is, watch your mail, something's going to be coming in the mail. If you have any other questions, like many people have been doing, reach out to me, um, through email. Um, I don't think my cellphone number is on the city website, but email me, and it's great, and I do respond. It might take me a day to get back to you, but I'm pretty prompt by getting back to you, so, that's all I have.
Kelly?
I just wanted to clarify that, um, that, that postcard or the, the thing we're going to mail out has to be mailed after the seventh of October.
Oh, after the seventh.
Mm-hmm. Between the seventh and the fourteen.
Okay, so, in October, I'll clarify, in October, we will be getting that. Thanks for that clarification, Kelly.
Okay.
Your turn.
Hey, um, I just want to, the mic's gone, but when Mike Stagg was here, I just, just have to know, he was really involved in this pool for several years, and it was very intense, and, and, uh, when he was kind of presenting that award, I, I just don't think everybody, anybody, or a lot of people recognize how supportive he was and trying to, to help us through that process, and I'm very appreciative of him. I mean, I, I try, but I, I got a little emotional there, because I could, I knew just what was, what had happened, and he, I'm grateful for that it's evolved to this point, and the pool, it's kind of a bittersweet. You see it sitting there, kind of inactive now, and it, but it's been cleaned up, it looks, you know, it's been taken care of, and it's, you know, ready, it's been, you know,
Winterized.
There's a lot of things, I'm sure you're going to
I was just going to say, winterized.
It hasn't been completely winterized, has it?
Mm-hmm.
All the fixtures and
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that's, that's one I-
We still have a few decisions to make, but it's been winterized, there's a, we're doing a die test. Yeah, I have a few things to say.
Okay, well, good, because I wasn't, I was aware that all the things were stored, and it was cleaned up and written, you know, but I didn't know about the winterization of fixtures and things, so thank you, so. Um, the, uh, Mike's pond, uh, we're gonna mow those pollinators in October. They've, they've established root and the, the extension service and different ones have recommended that that was be mowed. So I talked to Justin about it a little and so we'll just kinda schedule it sometime in October to mow that area on the east side there. And, um, I just comment on these, the cross crossings. I noticed, uh, the, those signs that they're, that are illuminated, you push the button and they, they, it's a signal. I, I saw it. It's been a great asset, I think, there at the Dairy Freeze, right over, right down here, I guess, at First or Second North. And, you know, we might wanna consider, it's just a thought, but maybe approaching you, Dot, about right over here on First North and Sen- and then up on Center Street. 'Cause those things I've noticed, people are respecting and, and noticing that, uh, signal now. And they have got it moved where it's accessible. It wasn't accessible a few, a little time ago, but it seems to be, you know, people are using it and they're pushing the button and actually using it now, so. Anyway, uh, Shade Tree didn't meet since, but we had quite an extensive meeting in, uh, planning and zoning, so maybe if Larry and Dan wanna help me a little bit. But we had a, um, Jones and DeMeo came and talked about, is it, is the name McLean Farmer?
Yep.
But he talked about the, the transportation, matching transportation plan concerning the crossings on that flood cha- channel. And there were, I don't know how many identified, a numerous amount that were in the plan. And they could see that's probably an overkill, so they, from the, uh, bridge on Main to six hundred west, down to a thousand, you know, and twelve hundred. But there were several of them that were identified and maybe, you know, when they get to that point to, you know, maybe reduce the number, you know, only identify the necessary crossings, it'll be smaller number. But they're gonna, there was a, you know, a recommendation, there's gonna have, there's gonna be a public hearing on the eighteenth, one of the three of the, with the planning and zoning concerning that, uh, I guess, the overall master plan, transportation plan and whether, you know, help me out, Dan, whether we accept it or revise it or-
So specifically, there's a, there's a, a group, there's a group of property owners that are all kind of trying to work together and figuring it out. Um, there's a master planned road that goes right up through all their parcels.
That's on twelve, huh?
On twelve hundred west between the, between Old Highway ninety-one and the flood channel. And twelve hundred west, right now, on the, on the transportation plan, that's, is, there's identified to be a crossing right there. Um, and, and keep in mind that the existing map that we have was created like back in two thousand two, back before this was a designated flood channel and a crossing meant putting in a culvert. Now we're, basically, we have to put in a bridge or something more massive. Anyway, so twelve hundred was on there, identified, um, in spirit, not in number, because the number is actually wrong on that old map. But, um, there's five parcels, um, very, very sparsely planned for residential and it's basically designated as, as a more of a major road. Um, I can't remember if it's a minor collector or whatever the exact designation is, which, which is a, for lack of a better word, a wider road. And, um, and they have requested that we amend the general plan, um, before the result of this whole master transportation plan, 'cause that takes about a year and they, most of them are wanting to move forward now. I think that they have a, at least a valid argument, um, and, but in order to make that change, Planning Commission can't just make it. You have to amend the general plan, amend the, um, transportation plan. So they're, they're gonna have a public hearing about amending that small section of the master plan map right now. And specifically what Planning Commission is considering is downsizing that road and rather than talk about dropping it as a crossing, because that conversation is part of a bigger conversation about where do we wanna have crossings there? 'Cause, I mean, if you just look from six hundred west out on the existing plan, there's six hundred west, a thousand west, twelve hundred west, fourteen hundred west, there's one out at like seventeen hundred west and then twenty-two hundred west. From that, from there to there, that's how many crossings are on our current map. So rather than just, right now, cherry picking one and eliminating it, the rea- the thing that will affect them the most is whether that gets downgraded to a residential road versus a collector. So that's, is specifically what's going to be on the public hearing, um, to hear and then they'll make a decision, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, those property owners are wanting to move forward and they don't wanna, which, we don't, I don't blame them. They'll have to wait that time. Okay, one of the other things on it, that was a, uh, the Stolls, Kippenstall came and wanted to, uh, abandon an easement. It was, uh, an easement on a lot that was next to their house that the, the Boardman's had, Charlie Boardman, his in-laws and, uh, what's her name?
Robin.
Robin. It's her parents. And anyway, that's where the old storage area was for the, the irrigation system when it went to those north fields. And so when that went pressurized, that got pretty much, it wasn't needed. And so there's an easement in there and they kinda wanted to just adjust the easement rather than abandon it.
Yeah, it's thirty-three foot wide, pretty much making the parcel unusable.
There's always other easements that access property. There's access easements or right of ways, I guess. And so there's already existing easements that they, but they just wanna, so they're gonna have to have a, a public hearing on that on the eighteenth also.
I don't know if that'll be on the eighteenth, though. We-
Isn't it?
They need to bring in an actual, um, um, a survey, something to be considered so that it can be looked at, voted on, which is gonna include a diagram, new legals, all that stuff, so.
Okay, well, it was scheduled, so I guess they changed, okay. Then the, uh, let's see, there was a sewer line discussion, but they decided that really wasn't the business of the planning and zoning. That's more of a legislative, um, business.
Administrative.
Administrative?
Yeah.
That isn't gonna be legislative where there's money and things involved?
Um-
'Cause he wanted reimbursement.
So, um, I-
No, he wanted to have an adjustment on his-
He wanted to have an adjustment on his-
His impact.
Building fees. We, we've looked at it legally and recommending not to do anything on it from a legal perspective, so.
Okay.
I've talked with Lee about that.
All right, and then the other one, this one, is it still on the, the agenda for a public hearing? That historic preservation appendix, you know, change, I mean, that, that was supposed to go to legal.
Well, we're getting a legal opinion about whether it needed to be, since, since the, the chapter refers to this, we, we're gonna get a legal opinion, 'cause it, 'cause it ultimately won't show up in the code. It'll always just refer to it.
Well, that's kinda the way it's, that's kinda where we were. That's what we assumed and then-
Right, but to adopt it as the official one, do we need to do that legislatively or can that be? In other words, do we need to have a public hearing and adjust our code if it doesn't actually get printed in the code?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna get a lea- getting a legal opinion on it.
So is that, public hearing pending or is that on for the eighteenth?
It's pending.
Okay. All right, and then the helicopter, it was a helicopter. They were addressing the, the conditional use permit to land helicopters and they basically decided not to address it and to not disclose the matter on that. Okay, the language for recreational courts, we want to change that. The recreational facilities, you should have gotten, you have a, I have a handout. So, just to give you an, an idea of what language they proposed, that is, and that's gonna have to go to public hearing on the eighteenth. And this is just a sample of the language so that, uh, you know, that'll be discussed and then the, if it, they recommend that it'll come to the council for approval to, for to amend the, an ordinance. Okay. But I just, I guess that's about it. That, yeah, that was a long meeting. Is there anything else, Larry, on that, on that?
No, I-
Planning and zoning? I mean, they highlighted it, okay. But I think, I just wanted to make a statement. I think that that, those individuals that were here should be recognized. That pool was a great success this year. And I think even though, you know, it's closed, people appreciated it being open and remember the sacrifice and the work that's been done by individuals that is, that made that possible. 'Cause I, I mean, there was a lot of excitement and happy times up there during the summer. I mean, I guess that's why I notice it's so kinda, I don't know, sad right now, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, it'll be good next year. Okay.
We appreciate, uh, the winterizing efforts by Public Works that was this, this past week, I think.
Dan, is the fountain winterized? The drinking fountain?
I don't know, and Stephen just left. He may know.
Okay. I would like to know.
Good catch. All right, Dan?
Me? Okay, um, tis the season, um- Oh, I'm not. Trust me, you're not gonna feel Christmasy when I bring up the topic, elections. The opposite of Christmas. There's, there's been, um, there's been some, um, talk, and there usually is at this time of year, um, about elections. It is a time of friction. There's been some discussion and talk and requests, um, about political campaign signs, um, in the right of way, in the public right of way specifically. And, um, I've, I've responded to, um, some requests and emails and we've, we've sent reminders out to the, the, um, those that are still, um, on the ballot that made it past the primary. However, um, when I was researching the state code on this today, um, I, I found some interesting, um, I thought it was very interesting. I think that we've been operating a little bit under, um, under an assumption that is, isn't exactly a hundred percent the way we think it is. And we may want to choose to do something as a city council, um, or not, but it's not expressly prohibited by state law to have campaign signs in the public right of way. UDOT does not allow them. I've confirmed today with Matt Rhodes, UDOT does not allow, um, campaign signs in their right of way. And when I asked who enforces that, it was Ghosts and Crickets. I would think it would be UDOT. They, they enforce, um, almost everything that happens within their right of way. Um, when it comes to posting political signs on public property, um, there's a section and it's, um, twenty A seventeen one oh three. In fact, chapter seventeen is, um, in, in section twenty A or chapter twenty A is, is dedicated to political campaign signs. But what it actually says, after giving a bunch of, um, definitions, that, um, I'll just read it. "A local government entity, comma, a local government officer, comma, a local government employee, comma, or another person with authority or control over public property that posts or permits a person to post a political sign on public property, colon, shall permit any other person to post a political sign on the public property subject to the same requirements and restrictions imposed on all other political signs permitted to be posted on the public property." Before I interpret that, the next one is, B is, so, so this, this local government entity and its, and its people within it that have authority may not impose a requirement or restriction on the posting of a political sign if the requirement or restriction is not politically neutral and content neutral. So, um, essentially what those two things say is, we, um, from, from the state law, they, they basically leave it up to us. We have to make it a fair playing field. We can post restrictions, including a hard restriction on nowhere on public property. Um, but what we can't do is place a restriction that would, that would be unfair to one or another candidate or something like that. Um, there is a different, a- and, and in our code, I've been looking and I, and I haven't had a lot of time, but this was just something I found in the middle of the day. But I couldn't find anything in our code other than you can't block a street or a sidewalk. Um, and definitely, public safety would always factor in, but we may wanna consider. Looks like Kelly's getting ready to say something. Yeah, go.
So I researched this the other day as well. I read the state code.
Uh-huh.
I read our code, um, trying to find where it says exactly that you can't post in the city right of way. And that's always been the practice. Um, our code, um, in section, or six point oh two point oh seven oh, posting bills and notices, basically what it says is you can't post on, um, pub- or on people's property without permission of the owner of that property or his agent or upon any Perwin City property without the approval of Perwin City.
Right.
And my takeaway from, from the state code was if you let one person, you have to let everybody.
Right, so we could choose to, and essentially what this is saying is, is we could choose to allow, um, people to put it on, on, on the public right of way in certain areas if we wanted to. We would just have to let everybody do it. Um, or we can ban it, um, if we want to, but we would need to expressly ban it. Um, we, it has been our practice that we, we don't allow it. Um, in fact, we've, we've told now candidates several times, um, and, and my belief is, um, you know, get it out there, have people police their own signs. Um, one of the challenges, two, a couple of, three of the challenges that just come to mind really quickly, and, and this is, this, this is not something unique to Perwin, obviously. Um, but, um, sometimes it's difficult to know exactly where private versus public is. Um, in some places, it's, it's kinda clear. If there's a sidewalk there, we don't have sidewalks everywhere. If it's, if it's closer to the street, if it's between the sidewalk and the street, it's obviously in the public right of way. If it's on the other side of the sidewalk to- towards a yard, it's kinda hard to know where that is. Um, the other thing is, is, was we need to be careful in, in just going out willy-nilly, moving them ourselves from an enforcement perspective, because if it turns out they really were in a private, then we've just now been kind of interfering with an election, messing with free speech. So we wanna be very clear if, if, depending on enforcement, depending on what we decide to do. So I would suggest that, under the code, what we have stated, what we have sent to the ca- to the candidates in form of letters and email this year, is us essentially stating the city's policy, um, which the code says that we can do. But if, if, if our intention is to not really ever allow this, I would think that we should actually just put it in our code. Um, with one caveat, and, and maybe, maybe it's fine the way it is and we just designate certain areas. I don't know. There's different approaches, but, um, I think we're good. Let's just stick with the path that we're on this year, um, because we have made that statement to all the candidates and asked them to move them. Oh, one of the other problems I was gonna state was, um, sometimes as a candidate, somebody will ask you for a sign. You'll ask somebody if, if they wanna take a sign. That person will go take their sign home and they'll prominently display it out. And so I, a good reminder to all the candidates is, um, if, if you give a sign, make sure the person that you give it to knows, don't put it in the public right of way. That's the, that's, that's a no-no in Perwin. So, um, I guess the last thing I would say is, is some, something that, let's make sure we're not tempted to do and that is, um, put a time limit. Uh, sometimes the cities will put a time limit that says you can only do it for a three-week period or a five-week period or after the, after the deadline they have to be removed and, and they'll put that in their code. Um, that's a major red flag. That's a constitutional problem. That's, if, if I wanna have a, let's not use a current presidential candidate. Let's say, if I wanna put a vote for a- Let's say, if I wanna put a vote for a Cali Bassett sign on my house and leave it there year round, that's my constitutional right. And when a city says you have to take that down on private property, we'll get sued by the ACLU and we'll lose. Um, and that's like case law in Utah, so we gotta be careful about that, if, not to be tempted. But we could literally say, we won't allow it anywhere in the public right of way. Um, then you have to solve the next thing, is the enforcement problem. Personally, I don't think we wanna create a police state. I think that if we, if the city makes reminders, if there's complaints, we let the candidates know and let them police themselves and, 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 um, let, I mean, most candidates, upon being, being told that there's a problem, they wanna, they don't want the bad image of looking bad and we'll, we'll, we'll probably adjust it, so... Anyways, that's, I just wanted to give an update on that, a little bit of research, thanks, I, and I was gonna talk to you and I hadn't had a chance, so...
And I was just gonna say too, that we do have a section in our code on elections that might not be a bad idea, to add just a little hang on camp.
It'd be nice to clarify.
I think so too.
Yep. If we're, if we're going to allow it under certain circumstances, clarify it. If we're gonna ban it, let's clarify it, so... Um, next thing, uh, library update. Um, we've been moving forward in the, um, in the updates and repairs to the library, not updates, repairs to the library. Um, we, we had an asbestos, uh, company come in and remove the asbestos flooring. Um, I, I was joking with Cory that it, right now we have a, a Halloween theme. When you walk into the library, the floor looks like it's been specifically colored for Halloween. It's kinda like brown and black. It looks kinda spooky. Um, they, they've removed that, which leaves, you know, the, the old marks on the floor and the, the, um, the, the old black glue, which you can still see, it's not mold. It's black mastic glue. They put a, they put, put a covering over that. So as long as we don't disturb that, scrape it up or something like that, it's fine. We can put, um, new flooring over the top of it. Which we have, um, I've been working with a company and we have somebody that's gonna come in and do that and replace it with, with new tile that'll look really sharp. Sharp, really good. Not sharp to the, to the touch. Um, sharp to the eye. And, um, the mold mitigation, um, sealing, um, removal, where we had water and there was some mold in that, in that test of, of the, of the tape test, um, should be, I think they have completed the removal of all that today. And the, um, the, um, all of the work that they've done to remove that. So, now we'll go into the next phase, and, and by the way, the library is open. They're, they're working within a sealed off area with air scrubber going and everything while they're doing that. Now we'll go to the next stage and that's, they'll go ahead and, and repair all of that and put back normal drywall and fix that.
What did the insurance say?
Um, insurance, um, I haven't heard anything negative. They did send an adjuster out this week and they came out, in fact, he even actually flew a drone over the library to take pictures of the roof. He took pictures inside, um, and so I th, I think everything looks fine there, um...
Questioning that, that room with the, with the paper?
Yeah.
We're not doing anything in there with that, with...
So, they actually had to remove some of the stuff in order to clean a, and, um, set it up, so they, some, and some of those, um, things were larger, so... And I didn't realize they were gonna do this, but they moved it into the, um, that conference room and spread it out. And I think they're, we, although it's not something we specifically hired them to do, they're doing some cleaning and, and, and of that stuff. So hopefully when the tests come back, when, when they're done, that that has been mitigated as well.
Because that was not bad, I mean, it wasn't...
Right. It's not black mold. It's a, it's a different kind of...
It's not, yeah, it's not a mold. It's a different type. It's only if you're allergic to it, right?
We're hoping that they, that that goes away, because it, just the act of removing them, cleaning them and putting that stuff back will help with that.
Okay.
Hope so.
So when they do the repairs to the drywall and all of that stuff, was that caused from the leaking?
Yeah.
So have we, um...
The leak has been repaired?
Yes, that's, was...
The leak that caused this was repaired?
Has been repaired, okay.
Are we gonna have another leak this?
Probably.
Uh, winter? Let's hope not.
Maybe. Hopefully not.
Um, and since we're talking about that, um, I did go to the, um, CDBG, um, how to apply workshop, which you have to go to. We have to send a public official, has to be an elected official or an appointed official, or I can't remember exa, exactly who qualifies, every year to this thing, if we're ever gonna apply for CDBG funds, community development block grant funds. And while I was there, I was listening more than normal to the specific details. And I even asked a question, could we do, because they, only specific projects can ap, can apply and receive funding on CDBG? Um, and I've since talked with Five County Association of Governments, who is the one that, that, um, administers the program locally. It is federal dollars, but they're the ones that, they, our Five County Association of Governments gets a certain amount and then they administer the, the program. Um, it is potential, um, it's lower down on the list of priorities. Um, in other words, every project, they, they rate them subjectively according to a predetermined list of, of factors. And they start with the highest of utility, utility needs and all this stuff, and then it goes to public safety and it goes down the list and only certain types of projects. The library does qualify, however, it's low down on the priority list. So, I've talked to Five County, I've set up an appointment with their administrator that admin, administers the program. And basically what I'm going to do is meet with him towards the tail end. There's a certain time that you have to apply in November. And he will know, he will have had his other, um, meetings with everybody else who's interested. I wanted to be on the tail end because it's a lot of work. It's federal, which is an F word. I so apologize for that. Sometimes my own filter doesn't work very good. But the qualifications, the paperwork, um, Build Back Better America, Davis Bacon Wages, all of the strings attached on federal projects, on buildings, it, I, I, unless it's a hard grant, like on a loan, it's not even worth it. But on a grant, um, depending on what it is, and there's no match requirement, now obviously if you have a match, you score better, but there's no match requirement. We would obviously wanna have some match. It may be that we could get a remodel of the library out of this. With CDBG.
Sort of like a, a hitched roof?
So, yeah, we would wanna do the roof, we would wanna do the, uh, HVAC, we would wanna update the, the lighting, we would wanna do, you know, some of these things. I mean, we couldn't do everything, um, because there is a threshold and they, it used to be two hundred thousand dollars. There wasn't hardly any pro, projects. Nobody wanted to go through all of the, the hoops and everything on a project of these types of things, and so they were getting less and less requests. They bumped it up to five hundred thousand. Now they only get nine hundred thousand for the full Five County region. Anyways, I'm gonna meet with him towards the tail end, and if it looks like there isn't other, uh, applications that will definitely come before ours, if it looks like we have a decent chance, um, we may just, um, apply for that.
Okay.
I'm hoping, fingers crossed, because it would be cool to be able to get a grant and remodel the library, um, soon, rather than, than later. Um, there may be other grants that maybe would be better, but, um, this is one that I'm looking at, just so you know. Um, airport runway project is moving along well. Uh, they had a, um, as they got digging up, um, or, um, oh, what's the word? Grinding up the asphalt, um, they found that there was quite a few soft spots. Um, that sounds like maybe it's not that big of a deal. That's a really big deal, um, under a airport. That's basically the, the, the ground underneath is not holding compaction, and that'll cause your runway to fail. And so, um, they had to, um, add, um, quite a bit of money. Luckily, we're only paying five percent of it in order to stop what they're doing and fix all of those soft spots. Um, lot of moisture infiltration, um, into the, um, ground under the, the, the runway. But they are, um, they're doing that and all the compaction tests are coming back good on the, on the, on the mitigation on the soft spots. And more importantly, I was afraid that this was gonna kill our timeline, 'cause we are on a tight one. Um, it looks like we still have a pretty healthy buffer. Um, we're really hoping, um, this, this whole project within our prairie dog window is by November first. We're still looking good there.
And the weather's been nice?
The weather has...
We've had, yeah, the weather has worked with us.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood. So that's moving along well, um... Um, I'm glad that Janelle is in the audience. I wanted to mention that we have successfully, she gave me the thumbs up as she came in. Um, Janelle has been working, we, we love it when we have people step forward and say, let us help. Janelle has been working on writing a, a, a grant, T-Mobile grant, to get some funds towards a phase of the Old Rock Church project. Um, with, with all of the different committee meetings and everything, we asked the, um, engineer who's doing work on, who's doing the design plans, is there a phase that's of a higher priority that we could start at? Um, we could, we could bite off a chunk of that with some of the money that's been raised. And he said, yeah, definitely, you can work on the roof. And so, um, we asked him to put together some documentation that would help us write that grant. Janelle's hand was up in the air, said, I will be happy to assist with that. So, um, that grant has been fired off. If we get it, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant, which by the time you take that plus money that we have as a match, um, from brick sales, um, hopefully we could actually rehab the, the roof and put a new, put a new roof on it. And while we're there, tie in some of the roofing and, and potentially even stabilize and fix the, um, the, um...
Roof.
Bell tower. So, fingers crossed, if it does come, if, if we do get awarded the grant, it'll come to the council to vote on, um, at that point. So, fingers crossed, and thank you so much, Janelle.
Yes, thank you. Do you wanna say, you wanna say something?
Mid-November. Cool.
Very good.
They're a lot of work. They really are, so thank you. Hey, we love it.
Yes. Larry's like...
(laugh)
Shh. What about my laundry?
Oh, strike that from the record.
That's funny.
So just as an update on the pool, um, we, we did shut down on the sixteenth, was the last day. Um, Public Works and Kirsten, and we have, um, a pool company that's been assisting, has been doing a lot of work to, to winterize and get ready for the winter. Um, and we wanna winterize correctly. Uh, one of the things Kirsten has been helping with is, is writing up standard operating procedures, um, so that, um, we, we have an operations manual of how to run this pool correctly. And, um, uh, the thing that you maybe heard me mention to her earlier in the meeting, um, the, the pool has a leak. Um, we don't know how bad it is. It, we, we've had to fill it as we go along, and that's normal with evaporation. But we suspect it's something a little bit more than evaporation. So the pool company working with is, um, they said, well, let us do a dye test. They'll throw some dye in and see if they can see if it's seeping. Um, I'm hoping that it's something, hopefully there's actually no leak at all and it's really just evaporation. Um, the next best hope would be that if it's something that we're gonna repair anyways with plaster work, um, or something in one of the lights or something that, you know, if, if one of the grommets didn't seal correctly in the lights, something easy that we can fix. Worst possible scenario would be if it was under the main drain. That was one of the areas that we did not, we were not able to look at when we were doing the other. Um, it's not a massive leak. We would've noticed a massive leak, but there is still some leak. And we, and, and you could see when the, when we were getting done and, and, um, um, everything, you, there's, there's micro cracking in the, in the plaster. The plaster needs to be repaired at some point, so it very well could be that, but... Um, one of the things that we're looking at, and just barely got a bid back yesterday, is we're looking into putting a pool cover on it. Um, in the past, we've just left it fully exposed. What evaporation happen, happen. Everything gets in the pool. Um, insurance is nervous about it. They're, you know, they're not gonna make us put a pool cover on, but they actually have now a pool cover. Imagine, it's the same type of material that you make a trampoline out of. And they actually drill and insert into the concrete around the outside these gold, um, and they're actually gold. And I'm like, really? Like, hopefully it's not twenty-four karat, but they install these things, um, which allow you to make, put a cover on it that's very taut. That decreases evaporation. It increases the protection of the pool. It's actually a safety thing. Um, it will support a person's weight if somebody at where happened to fall in or something like that. Um, and water does go through it, so it, like, snow and everything will melt and go right through it. Um, problem is, is the bid came back at like, um, it's gonna cost like nine thousand bucks. So I'm not done, um, in fact, we, we have another invoice on my desk right now. There's a few things that still haven't been finished yet as we're trying to finish some of the details with, with other projects jumping in the way of priority. So, um, I guess I'm just needing to look and see whether it's something we can stomach or not. We may just, we may just not do it and invest in that after we plas, replaster the pool. I don't know, we'll see. But everything has gone well. They drained it to below the level so that they can blow out all the lines, um, and so that our equipment is, doesn't have any water in any of the pipes all winter long. And, um, we really don't wanna expose the plaster, um, and so we'll try to keep it full of water to, to the best we can. But everything has been winterized as far as the equipment and is off. And they've done a pretty dang good job. We took down the climbing wall. There's no point in having that up in the sun, taking a wind load, stressing everything if, if it's not needed, so we took that down, covered it up. Um, took down things from the, um, everything else, put away all the furniture. Um, we, we actually...
How sad.
Had, um, had a contractor come out and seal the concrete, the new concrete. We, it had to wait till it cured. And then it's, it's now been sealed, so it has more of a wetter look. But what, they added a, an additive to it, which won't make it not be slick. So, but it looks really sharp. Um, in a perfect world, we would've poured the concrete, waited the time for it to cure, and then sealed it without any staining. But we needed to use the pool, so there's a few little, not...
Things.
Yeah, there's a few little things. I guess, I guess one of the worms apparently got sealed in for time and...
All eternity.
Yeah, I was gonna say all eternity, but that, that concrete won't last that long, so... Anyways, um, things looking good there on the pool. Those are the things that I have.
What about the heater?
Heater's off and, and, um...
They're not gonna run that, then?
No, we're not gonna run it. If we were to run all the equipment all year round, there would be a whole bunch of, of additional work that would have to be done on the piping inside the equipment room, not to mention the wear and tear on all that equipment all year round and the utilities. Um, so, I thought that that was something that we basically had to do, and I, it stressed me out. I, I had a lot of stress about it. And it was good to hear from one of the pool guys. He's like, no, hardly any outdoor seasonal pools, they run them year round. Like, there's no need. Put a good cover over it and you're, and you're good. So, anyways.
All right, there's a couple of loose, of loose ends. I was hoping that everything was gonna get covered. Um, we're getting really close to getting our active transportation plan back. They are working together with our transportation plan so that those are dovetailed and, and, uh, work well and, um, represent each other well. But what we've been asked for recently, and I've done a shout out a little bit to the community for a few people that I know have good, high-quality, high-resolution photos. But if we have any good people on bikes or people on sidewalks or trails, um, the idea of some recognizable historic locations, you know, obviously like Heritage Park, places like that, um, that can be included in that, 'cause it's kind of an immortalized, um, document, or at least for some time, to represent our active transportation goals here in Parowan, and again, also will be part of our overall transportation plan. Um, if you have those, send them to mayor@parowan.org. And I can send those over and they can wrap that up and they'll come and present it to city council and to the community, and it'll be great. The other thing is, I was asked to reach out and did to USA Pickleball Association. There's a managing director of facilities. His name is Charles Smits. And we hadn't had a great, had great luck communicating and, and, um, I was able to get in touch with him and start to go over our location and our design and our goals as a community with that facility. And he actually, um, said he'd be willing to come out. So I asked that to be scheduled at some point, hopefully, you know, I said, we have a meeting, we still have to approve location. But it would be great to have the USA Pickleball Association just, um, over, do an overview of our facility design and have that director kinda, you know, somewhat endorse our facility. It would be really awesome to just have that, uh, credential on our, on our course, on our courts. Um, we've had a couple of different people that have been very receptive to helping with some things. Uh, we already talked about the design, um, designs for the pickleball courts, but also, um, some things with the Old Rock Church. I didn't know if, I, I know Councilman Burton was there for the last meeting that we had. Um, it was Ava Chamberlain, Karen Miller, those Zaleskis, um, Janelle, who I think at that point was trying to wrap the ground, grant up, so that was really good that she was there, and then we had Steve Cornell and where we were at with things and, and really kind of a direction with it. And so I, I just wanna update on that. Um, we have around the windows, we have obviously the seeples. We have areas that just aren't very protected by weather, and so we really want to shore that up a bit and protect it going into the, the winter again and not just leave it exposed to the elements for another season before we can get kind of into this higher level work. Um, and so evaluating it, it's just a lot more extensive. It is probably not what a... It is probably not what a volunteer or even someone really good with a paintbrush would just go out and put another coat of paint on it. It's going to need some really, um, aggressive prep work and some possible replacement of some of the wood. And so I reached out to a couple of local people that were recommended to me by the few people that were there that day and have had really, um, a, a good response. So, I'll have more to report at the next meeting about the direction of that. But I talked to, to Dan about that and he said that, you know, with the money that's been raised, we still potentially have to do a budget adjustment if we end up hiring someone to come in and do that work. So, I'm not really clear on how that works, but I wanted to bring it to the council.
So, I mean, we, we can raise money with, with fundraising, but until we've budgeted to spend that money, it's not, like, we will go over budget by spending it. Just because it's come in as a revenue account, we need to budget to, to expend the funds. If we were going to do, um, something with, um, donated labor or something like that, there's not cash that flows through the, the, the city's books. But for the cash to flow through the city's books, we need to do a budget adjustment in order to spend it.
Okay, that's-
And that's a common misconception. A lot of times you think, hey, there's money that's sitting in a bucket, now we can use it. Um, technically, we can't spend any money, um, if it's us spending the money, um, without it being included in our budget.
So, the good news is we have, we're going to end up with two and possibly three bids on that. And we'll have something to review, we'll be able to do a budget adjustment. We actually have been pleasantly surprised by, um, the interest in, in the project to have that done professionally. Um, the other outcome of that meeting is we still don't really know where we want to put the bricks. So, we can order the bricks, they can come, we can put them in a storage unit until we figure out where we're going to put the bricks. But we're really looking for direction on where we want to initially put the bricks. And so I know Ava Chamberlain did kind of a community shout out and said, if anyone has any ideas, we, you know, would love to hear them. And if it's the, around the Rose Garden, if it's a pathway to the Veterans Memorial, we're not really sure. We don't really have enough bricks to do a substantial amount. But we do want to have a plan for installation and design of where Phase One bricks will go. So, we still need to get that figured out and, and that's an open item on that list off the meeting. Um, just that we need to get that determined. Um, but again, there's now, I've been told, materials and, and just tech- techniques that could really make preparing that correctly last. And that would be better than just, you know, putting another coat of paint on it. Um, so that's all, I think, really good news. Um, I'm glad that we were able to move forward tonight on the update, um, you know, for the locations of the pickleball courts because that allows us to obviously continue to, to have some of these, more, more of these details sorted out and figured out. But also because at the six month mark, we need to give an update to the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant on, on our, where we're at with our pump track. We still have about six weeks, um, to, to do that, so we have some time. But I didn't want to have to update that we still don't know where that's going. So, it's good that we're moving in a direction on that. And we have eighteen months to, to complete that and we can extend if we need to. But it's still, it's a good benchmark to, to be moving on that. Um, as far as, I'm trying to think, I thought there was one other thing. Oh, I didn't know if Mary wanted to come up. I have been talking to her about kind of the capacity of the facility and where we're at and, and she had some things. And I didn't know if you wanted to just update on what's going on out at the facility. Yes. Oh, Mary Hanley. At the facility, if you want to come up. I don't know if we're still at capacity. I know that we were, we didn't have anywhere to put any additional dogs, um.
The shelter is full. It has been full for a while. No prospects of adoptions. Um, we need a new shelter. We only have four runs. We did have a nec- another dog come in that, uh, the owner was located. But it's a problem. Um, luckily, our police know a lot of the dogs that are picked up, they take them home. These dogs have all been dumped, so.
That's sad.
Yeah.
And just the amount of obviously, you know, concern, time she spends with, with the facility and the animals. I wanted the council to be aware of where we're at with it because we haven't even talked about it. It's been, it's been a while before, since we've even talked about it.
We did the repair on the fence, but the fence is still not adequate. Um, there's not enough room for the dogs. These dogs are put out there and they get an hour or two of human contact a day because it's not staffed. So, um, I would like to either try to get a grant to redo all the fencing, redo the ground. Now they're running on hard rocks, big rocks, um, or look at a new location.
What, what do they typically put for a ground cover?
Uh, several years ago, PAL did rock and it's the one, uh, half inch gravel, which is the big gravel. And that's what they walk on, run on, poop on.
So, ideally that comes out.
We have all the, the volunteers, we, you know, we have good volunteers go out. We're out there twice a day, um, you know, it's just, it's hard. When you, you, right now is really bad with all shelters. All the shelters in this area are full. Uh, people are trying to give away dogs all the time on Facebook. Um, I don't, I don't have a solution, so, but it's really, we could use a new facility. And we don't have a bathroom.
Yeah, and, and we, we've talked about some of the things and some solutions on those, but I just wanted to make the council aware of, of the state of that situation out there.
Yeah, and if none of you have ever been out to the shelter, I'd be happy to take you so you can see it, uh, what we deal, you know, what we have, so.
What is the preferred pad? Is it cement or asphalt?
Cement would be the best because-
Asphalt would be hot, wouldn't it?
Asphalt would be too hot. Uh, cement is good.
But rock is hard on the pads, isn't it?
Uh, the rock is-
Hard on their pads, isn't it?
I would-
Yeah.
I haven't had much trouble with, uh, their pads getting bad. It's just not very, you know, I have one dog out there that's been there for three months. Two dogs that have been there for three months. And, um, you know, it's, it's a problem, but-
I understood cement was best for their pads and their feet.
Cement, probably. The only problem there is winter, it gets icy. Uh, the north side of the building, which we have to go through to get to the other runs in the winter, is a skating rink. We do have access on the other side, the, the south side of the runs. But, um, it'd be good to have it all covered. So, well, we did have problems with the dogs jumping out, but we did fix that. Um, we still, the, the fence, because of the ground cover that was put in, is only five foot four at the highest. Dogs can go over that very easy. We fixed it so they can't get out of the shelter, but they can go into the shelter, uh, or into the other runs. We have a female right now that's been in heat and she's visited a couple of the boys.
She's been around.
She's getting spayed. So, that's really about all I can tell you.
Okay, and the hot water heater failed, you don't have hot water.
We have hot water, it just smells like rotten eggs.
Okay, I knew there was something to do with that.
Yeah.
What was going on?
It's just old, you know, it's been there. I don't know how long that building's been there. Um, I did see a man out there tonight that's working on that new project out there and they graded more, they cleared more of the land around it, which is nice until winter. Then it becomes a mud puddle and makes it diff-. They do grade it now, so the snow, so we can get out. For some of the volunteers, it's hard because they don't have the four wheel drive.
Mm-hmm. So, anyway, it's just been a while since we've talked about it, so I wanted to kind of bring everyone up to speed with the state of that facility.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, if you want to see the shelter, I'd be happy to take you out. I don't even, a lot of people don't even know we have a shelter, they don't even know where it's at.
Didn't we talk about doing some type of volunteer work to put a bathroom in out there?
I thought so.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and there's potential to do that. We, I mean, we really just need to move forward with some things and get some of the facilities maintenance stuff taken care of because again, that's a situation that's-
Yeah.
Inconvenient is an understatement, to not have a bathroom.
It's inconvenient.
Yeah, so I don't know if there are any other questions about that and, anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Did anyone have?
Thank you.
Well, I know that we've kind of talked about relocating it when we were going to start building more hangars. Am I incorrect in-
No, well, that's been the plan.
Yeah, they've talked about relocating.
Moving it over onto the-
On the highway.
Paragona Highway side. That'd make it more easy, accessible, as far as year round.
I hate people who dump animals, it's just sad.
There, there are a lot of grants out there for shelters, um, so that would be something to look at. I can look, look them up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
How does one go about finding, like, how do you know what grants are out there?
You go online.
Speaking for somebody who's never looked for a grant or like-
Yeah, you just-
Would want to help maybe to look for a grant, but I just don't know where, where do you go?
Well, the state has a new portal.
The federal, the federal grants have a portal. I just did a big training and learned all about it. Um, again, if it's a grant, then, you know, there's a lot of strings attached, but there's some- But there's a lot of grants, um, for, for that. States have, and I have the, I have the web addresses, I took lots of notes, um.
I think there is that state one now. There's a fed- on- There's federal listings. And then you go, you, you type in the project and you can get information. That's what we did when we started the Meeks Pond.
Just looking for grants is out of my realm.
And this was before the internet was big.
And there is that new portal with that, we learned about it League of Cities and, uh, training. And it's, it, it seems like it's going to be really robust and a really helpful tool.
They're just getting it going.
Yeah, they're just getting it going, so it's-
So, it's not up yet or-
Well, I don't think it's totally functional.
I didn't yell at it, but not really, not really populated as it will be when it's completed, but they were training us on it. So, I, and thank you, I didn't say thank you. I mean, what you do out there with what you have to work with is outstanding and really appreciate it. So, it's, it's kind of one of those in the background things that a lot of people don't even, like you said, even realize it's, it's going on every single day. Um, so, you know, we've looked at some spots there on Paragona Road. I know we've talked about, you know, that, but I wanted to get it back on the radar. Um, the last thing is I did yet, um, have a conversation at our TRCC meeting with, um, Mayor Callaway about getting our OHV signs in place. And I'm really hoping we can get that done because he says there's been some dangerous situations on that road this year. And we've kind of started looking into that in a direction there with Mike Orban, who's on his way into retirement, who we certainly don't want to have get out the door until we get that part of our, of our safety managed with the work that he's done and basically spent a lot of his life, um, seeing through. Um, and I think that, there's so many other things, but I think that kind of gets us up to speed on the most, most important things right now. Um, are we having an eleven o'clock tomorrow, Old Rock Church, um, with Steve or not tomorrow?
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right. And with that, do we have any other updates from staff or anyone else? Okay, then at this time I would, we do need to go into a closed session. Um, reasons being character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Um, and then the purchase, exchange or lease of real property and I think, does that cover us?
Purchase, exchange, lease or sale of real property.
Okay, so with that, I would need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the character, professional competence or physical, mental health of an individual. And what was the other one, exchange?
Purchase, exchange, lease or sale of real property.
Purchase, exchange and lease of real property.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call to go in, Callie, okay?
Jim Sherliffe, aye.
Matt Gale, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Carol Shalhopper, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, David Burton, aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate you.